Thank you. I just want to know how sick you guys are. I love coconut. The bar.
Maybe they don't want me.
Feel like a baby.
Yeah.
I'm a prince.
You're acting.
Are you here, John?
Uh, there.
The, uh, the.
I don't know.
They've given our, uh, many calls. I see. It's a wirework. Here on item seven.
Um, although it's in your.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, please. I'm sure. Don't shoot. Yeah. Same, technically. That was. Did you hear what I said?
Is that where you were going? I was afraid.
Yeah, so listen.
I carry it forward.
You too, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
I'm gonna, we can have one microphone up there at the podium, which is what we allow for the media. So I'm gonna give you one back. Is that a microphone up there?
Yeah, give one to Bob and one to Chris.
Yeah, they're right here. So one, that's what we do for media. We don't allow ones. You have to treat everybody the same.
Alright.
Okay.
Come on.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys do what you can.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, it's good to see you.
Alright, thanks, Stacy.
Great for you.
Uh, this will be, I believe, the first. Second Thursday, uh, left. Yeah.
Hello. How are you all? Sorry for the.
Or he's almost.
Hi. That's not about me.
You need to go for the. Okay. Uh, sure. Just. I don't think that you would fall. I didn't say. Hello?
Look, I'll tell them. Yes, I was. Well. Is that funny? And.
Yeah. Well, they kind of took it. They took the ball. In the. Hello? I wanted to. It's, yes. Yeah, because before we had that, I think we've done part of that.
And it's not designed for that.
So it's, it's also just, it's always supposed to be from.
Well, I know. For my care.
I haven't opened it yet. Brian, he said it, well, there was a submission, a request through, uh, OPEB forms. So Brian said she's, he said it. They, he did. I don't know. We'll talk about it. Cause I saw it right before. I was like, I didn't get it, but I just, I didn't read it, but I keep thinking, never know about my tape.
That's a no.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be all over that. We're, we're the new, uh, we're the new highway forty.
We're the thirty-five.
He's a good word.
Yeah, we're the earlier.
Yeah. Took out the. The. And.
And.
Yeah, well, because. Chris, I'm glad.
Cause. But also, uh, no. Say a lot. So I have to say that.
How about you?
Yeah.
I'm good. Oh, sorry.
Great. Don't think that I do.
I mean, this is like the. What is bigger?
I don't know. It's not doing everything to do. But. I, I can.
We're. Yeah. We're talking about that. Lovely. Lovely.
Sort of than other things.
Other things, but.
I'm standing.
No.
Yeah.
That's two. One year.
Cause he won't even.
Oh, no more.
We'll just sit together. We'll just sit together, cause we had our share.
This is a problem. Don't breathe our air. Don't spread the last. Where's Fred and pretty long stuff? We're doing a free stuff. I got.
Yeah.
It's. I don't. So you pay all the time. Almost. We used to do the. I got it to the podium. Division. Even the last question. That's the answer. Okay. Um, I think you should tell. You should tell them. Just don't say.
Alright, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. And if it's just in the president.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, stand. My nation, on your ground, and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let him go, please.
Mayor Page.
Here.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neil. Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silver's.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Plard. Okay, next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use the time. Make comments about matters that do not appear in the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. These individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We did have a, uh, blue signup sheet here, and it looks like we have a, uh, Mr. Leach that is, uh, interested to report. Is that, um, on the agenda or?
Later on the agenda.
Later on the agenda. Well, don't let me forget, cause sometimes I do, try not to, uh, when we, when we get to that. You raise your hand. Is there anyone else that isn't currently signed up that would like to come forward during public comment to discuss an item that is not on the agenda? Yeah, I see nobody coming forward, so we will close out the public items at this time. Uh, next item up is consent agenda. All items under this heading are considered routine by the city council. May be enacted by one motion. There will be no server discussion of these items unless the council members are requested, in which case that item will be removed. The city agenda is considered separate. We do have three items tonight, so is there any one on the council that would like to have any of those items removed? See if I can warn you, anything removed, I would entertain a motion then. So.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the council approve consent agenda. Now, there's one, two, three.
Okay, we have a motion there, a second. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
Yeah, we have a motion, second, and a point.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passed with eight zero.
Thank you, Mayor Plard. Uh, next item up is the mayor's report. Um, and I'd sort of like to kind of let everybody know what's been going on. If I miss any council personnel, I'm still looking at the end of the issue. But I am, Councilmember Silver's and Hands attended, uh, yeah, and Hands attended the picnic PD luncheon. Uh, thank you all the chefs that cooked cheap and where they cooked for the entire city staff and the farmers market. Uh, were truly more than this team married and were a member, so appreciate that. Uh, for those of you that may not know, I was on vacation for twelve years, so my reports will be a little shorter tonight. On twelve years, excuse me. It seemed like twelve years. Well, it is. It, it didn't fly by fast enough, I'll tell you that. But, uh, I can tell you that Disney World, though, is, is not the world's happiest place. You stand in line for ninety minutes and get a one minute ride. It does not make you happy, so, uh, but, uh, so if, there were a lot of things that the people did do for us, so whatever we got, flowers got. But, uh, Councilmembers Leahy, Silver's, Ryder's, and Hands attended the family fun Friday in Brown Park. That's in, that's why I have my notes. Um, another note, uh, Councilmember, uh, this is a joke. Another note, Councilmember Hands went to make music today. What type of note? Okay, can I explain the jokes? So. Who am I wrong? Councilmember Hands attended the flags for freedom planning committee meeting. Uh, we all set to go. Flags are set. Uh, setup is coming this Saturday at seven AM, and the takedown will be the following Saturday on July sixth at ten AM. On the fourth of July, the market will be hosting the event starting at one PM. Uh, they'll be banned through the flag store. Uh, hope to see everybody there that day. Uh, if you're really interested in coming out to mark the field, that's gonna be taking place on, was it Thursday? Yeah, Thursday at eight AM, which is what my head says. Um, down at the farmers market. Uh, Councilmember Yadrich and Hands met with Mr. Engle to prepare tonight's agenda. Councilmember Yadrich and several staff represented Marion at the northeast Chamber of Commerce golf tournament. I understand it's like a sixty-nine, we were under par. I, I understand they were, they were, the team was on par with last year. On par with last.
Under par with last year.
Under par.
Yeah. Yeah. We golfed on the surface of the sun for the city this morning.
We, we appreciate that, and we're sure it was, uh, a good time. Uh, Councilmembers Silver's and Shaveta attended the public art committee meeting. Uh, committee has completed their master of public art plan, which gives guidance for any of our future projects. I think it's been presented this evening. Uh, I attended the farewell event today for Dr. Hubbard and Michelle Hubbard at the Shinigun Public School Superintendent. And our very own Joy Engle, Mr. Engle, uh, was one of the guest speakers at the event. She did a really good job, so, uh, who knows the new, uh, Joy, the job she did, wishing, uh, her well in her retirement. Not Joy, she didn't retire, but. Keep her working for a while. But, uh, and, uh, I met the new, uh, the new superintendent, so that's, that's good, Dr. Michael Schumacher, Schumacher. Let's say for, for the. Okay, and, uh, Councilmember, our Council President Hands, I agree that staff and staff agree that businesses, that the business appreciation happy hour. Um, thanks to our economic development terms and management firm Crane for another great event. Lets our business know how important they are to the economic vitality of our city. Uh, we'd just like to show them a little love every year. Uh, OPFD is going to be hosting a dedication opening of the new fire station at Saturday fifth and concert this Friday at eleven thirty AM. We all are invited to attend that. That, that's, that's it, actually. You just had one page tonight. Includes my mayor's report, uh, council items, uh, first up is the knowledge received in twenty twenty-three. Independent auditors report, we got Director Alver from the.
Good evening. Tonight we have Taryn Loughlin with, uh, AGH, Alan Gibson Wood, to talk about the audit that we just had completed.
Good evening. Um, as Donna mentioned, I'm with AGH. I'm a senior vice president in our government auditing services practice, and most of you have been through this before, but this is to present the results of fiscal year twenty twenty-three financial statement audit. Um, that was just recently completed. Um, again, the scope of the work that we do, uh, for this city is to opine on the financial statements, which is stating the financial statements you received are materially accurate. You can rely on them as a reader and user of the financial statements. Um, the audit process is a lot of work, and so I want to thank Donna and all of her staff and really a lot of the departments throughout the city for their assistance throughout the process. Cause we do talk to, um, rec, courts, you know, all those areas that do receive money. Um, and so we do appreciate everybody's cooperation. The audit's always very efficient. We get responses, um, quickly to our questions throughout the audit process. So again, thanks to all the city staff for their help. Um, before I go into our required communications, which should be in a separate letter that you received, um, I'm just gonna highlight that we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, which means that they do materially reflect the books and records of the city for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So now I'm gonna go over the, um, the letter, our required communications. For those of you who have been through this before, some of those communications is kind of standard every year communications. So I'm gonna highlight on what's new, specifically for fiscal year twenty twenty-three's audit. So I'm gonna kind of start towards the end of the first page. It talks about the adoption or change in accounting policies. I always like to highlight this, there was no changes this year for the city, although there were some new accounting standards that were technically effective for the city. They weren't material to the city, didn't really apply to the city's operations. So I always like to point that out, if you're looking at last year's numbers and this year's numbers, changes would be due to changes in operations, not because things are accounted for differently between the two years. Um, so no significant changes to those standards. Uh, we did spend some time evaluating one of the standards. Um, you might remember, I mentioned last year, there was a new lease standard that required leases to be accounted for differently. There was a similar standard this year related to software subscriptions that is very similar to, you're just leasing software instead of a piece of equipment. Um, but again, there's no significant long-term subscriptions that the city has, who might have some next year. Um, but for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, there wasn't any, so no significant impact there. Um, on page two, um, again, not all, uh, numbers within your financial report are hard to ask, known numbers. There are some estimations that, um, generally accepted accounting principles do require the city to record. Um, so we always like to highlight those ones that are significant. And again, this year, they're the same ones as last year, and they're all pretty much personnel-related estimates. So estimating compensated absences, you know, what you would owe employees for sick vacation accruals. Um, and then the other two are related to more to post-employment benefits. So other post-employment benefit liabilities are OPEV, is healthcare-related costs for retirees. And then, of course, your share of the capers pension liability. Um, in all of those cases, we're required to make sure, um, that the way management is determining those estimates is reasonable and in line with standards, and that information used is accurate. Calculations are done appropriately. Um, in all cases, we found that that was the case. At the bottom of page two, we're also, uh, required to discuss any audit adjustments that were performed during the audit process. Um, there were only two this year, so overall, a very, very clean audit. Um, and you can see the dollar amounts there aren't too large when you consider the overall activity of the city for the whole year. Um, one was actually just a timing issue, recording an expense that really wasn't incurred until next year. Um, and then the other one was just chewing up a, um, increment financing receivable, was some information we received from the county during the audit process. So, um, again, a very clean audit. Um, we had no, um, misstatements that we found that are not reflected within the financial statements. Those are considered incorrect in the statements. Um, so none of those, so again, we only have two overall adjustments for the whole audit. Um, onto page three, I always like to point out, kind of in the middle of this, is just observations about the audit process. I already kind of mentioned this, but again, we had no disagreements with management during the audit process. We received information timely, um, and answers to our questions timely as well. Um, at the bottom of page three, this was new last year, so I'm just kind of, kind of re-highlight it, cause it is important. Um, bottom of page three on the top of page four just explains the independence rules we're required to follow, um, that we're independent of management. And, you know, the city makes us aware if they take anything's going on that we impair our independence. So there's no concerns theirs, or it leads to us being independent and being able to issue, um, an opinion on the financial statements. Um, and then on page four and into page five, these are, um, just similar, um, communications that you've seen there in the past. Again, we just like to do reminders every year about things like cybersecurity. Um, just keep it at the top of your mind. That's not something that necessarily falls in a financial statement audit. But, um, we just like to remind councils and any governing board that we work with that it is a risk out there. And, uh, make sure you feel comfortable with, um, how the city's handling that risk. Um, again, um, just a standard communication there, just as a reminder, so it relates to that. Um, and with that, um, again, overall, a very clean audit, um, an efficient audit, and I will open it up to any questions anybody may have.
Any questions for yourself? I see in either direction. Thank you again for writing an audit, and I'm glad that we came out clean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Uh, I would entertain a motion if we accept that.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council acknowledged the receipt of the twenty twenty-three financial report.
Okay, we have a motion, Mayor, a second. We're in, shattered.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Mayor Plard, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich. Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Mayor Plard. Uh, it looks like the next item up might be the ETC system survey results presentation.
Hi, everyone. Uh, tonight, uh, apologies for my voice, I'm losing it. Um, but tonight we're here to present the, uh, community survey results for twenty twenty-four. Um, as you all recall, we complete this survey on about a three-year rotating basis, just so we can compare and benchmark ourselves over the course of time. Um, but I have Robert here with ETC. I won't go too much into what they do or how they do it, that's what he's here for. Um, but a copy of the community survey is available online. It was linked in your packet. Um, in addition to that, we won't be covering tonight, but there also was a business survey completed, um, available for your viewing on the same link. We did, uh, review it with the business community at last week's business appreciation happy hour, uh, which was quite successful. So we're very excited about these results. Um, you should be very proud of your community and very proud of your staff, uh, for the results that you're gonna see tonight. So with that, I'm here to welcome Robert. Just trying to make sure I hear it. I don't mean it's war. There you go. Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as Caitlin said, I'm Robert E. Cockburn with ETC Institute. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to first commend your staff, Chris and Caitlin and others that participated in this process, a lot of work. Come up with questions and fine tune those, and I, I credit all communities that will take the time to reach out and engage their citizenry and business owners to, to truly listen to them. That's kind of a dying art of that, a lot of places, and, and a lot of people in this country feel disenfranchised, and not here. You're gonna see very positive results, and I think it's in part because of that desire to engage and to listen. And we'll see some of that as you go through here. So this is just a little bit of a note of your footprint of where ETC is. Um, we like to say we're one of the largest and one of the best, um, research companies in the country. We're with a lot of counties and cities, uh, throughout the country, more than three million people we surveyed since two thousand and six. Uh, more than a thousand different cities, and now all fifty states, that needs to be updated. So quickly, I'm gonna go through the agenda here, purpose and methodology, bottom line upfront, major findings, summary, then open up any questions you might have at the end. So this is a quick description, I'm not gonna hit all of these and read this to you, so the survey description, though, we try to keep it fairly brief. So a five-page survey, we figured people, most people fill that out in, in really fifteen minutes. Uh, the method, we administer it between March and May. We wanted a target of at least, uh, four hundred residents. We actually exceeded that, and had four hundred and thirty-nine responses, which gives you a, a ninety-five percent confidence level that you're gonna have a margin of error. Probably from any surveys, you see there's, it's always a margin of error, and usually fifty is the standard, but because we actually got over four hundred, we were able to deliver this with a four point seven percent margin error. So bottom line upfront, and I apologize, this is rather lengthy, and it's worth reading, but I'm not gonna read it all. Um, I will hit some of the highlights here. Basically, you'll see as we go through residents have a very positive perception of the city in almost all categories that we, that we measure and ask about. Uh, really want to draw your attention to the middle section that says the city of Marion is setting the standard when compared to Kansas City Metro and the national averages. So one of the things that happens when you do a survey is you're able to not just see your numbers in a vacuum, but with a company like ETC, we'd say, okay, that sounds really great, but how are you doing compared to others? And maybe you get a fifty percent satisfaction on a particular survey, and you think that's really bad, but compared to others, you see their average is thirty percent, then it changes that a little bit. And we're gonna go through here, what we really want to do is come away with a list of items to help you go forward, to make a difference and move the needle in this survey, uh, moving forward. So the satisfaction ratings for Marion were the same or higher than Kansas City Metro area in thirty-eight of the thirty-nine areas. The only area, I'm sure you were gonna ask, was the area that we weren't. Uh, above them, it was, um, it was feeling of safety in commercial retail areas. And you're within the margin of error, it was four percent below the, the KC Metro area, but that was the only area that we measured that you were below. But we'll see all of those individually as we move forward. And then finally, you, you rated significantly higher, that means five percent or more, uh, in every single category where they've been measured for the national survey. Here, that doesn't happen by accident, it happens by a lot of hard work by you as council, your staff, um, everybody involved, and citizens for being engaged really helps as well. We'll go through these high investment priorities, we'll have a whole list, and we'll show you how we arrived at these, but enforcing cleanup litter and debris, rated as the highest. Enforcing maintenance of residential property, enforcing mowing and trimming of residential property, and enforcing the maintenance of commercial property, all, uh, will be highlighted as high investment priorities. So major finding number one is gonna be the residents have a very high perception of the city. Again, a lot of data here, I encourage you to look through it in more detail at your own time. Um, but if you look at all these, no fewer than sixty-four percent of, uh, residents were satisfied with any of these different perception items. The one thing I will do and pause as we move forward here is I see a lot of cities' clients that we work with that will focus on the red. So if we looked at the bottom line, there's how's the city planning new development and redevelopment in the community? You say, oh, ten percent are unhappy, maybe we should really focus on those ten percent and, and making them happy. I suggest and encourage my clients to look at the areas of gray. These are people who took the time to fill it out, took the time to say they had an opinion, only to say, I'm neutral. What causes a neutral response? A lot of times, it's just, they need more information, they're not familiar with it, but they don't, they don't click, don't know, they say, we, we're on neutral. So you're gonna have a much better opportunity actually reaching out through different means to inform your citizenry of what's really happening with some of these other areas, exploring, you know, what you can do in that regard, then chasing. There's always gonna be a recalcitrant percentage or two of people, no matter what we put up here, that are gonna be negative. But, um, overall, very, very positive perception. We look at quality of life, quality of city services and all of that. Satisfaction with public safety, public safety services is a huge area of concern for a lot of residents, and you can see here, uh, you had almost very, very little dissatisfaction with police services. Again, you had some areas there, uh, quality of animal control, visibility of police in neighborhoods where you had large areas of neutral. And if you're looking at trying to increase the, the blue and the light blue categories, there are, those are the areas you might focus on. How safe do you feel in following situations? So we measured in the neighborhood, in your neighborhood during the day, at night, uh, in the city parks, all of those, you can see very, very. You can see very, very little in terms of people who feel unsafe. Doesn't mean you're totally disregarding someone who has a valid opinion, has had a bad experience. It's just we're trying to understand overall what the perception is. So if somebody comes in and says, our parks are completely unsafe, you're going to go, those residents don't feel the way that you do, I'm sorry. It gives you a little better information perspective. Satisfaction with parks and recreation? Again, you can go through here. With the exception of fees charged for recreational programs, no more than 7% of residents are dissatisfied with any of the parks recreation items. And I would suggest that no matter what you charge, most people are going to find something issue with what it's been, what they've been charged. Satisfaction with code enforcement? Again, the majority of residents are satisfied with code enforcement. You do have some areas, some pockets of areas. Remember, this is just a snapshot in time, okay? And so this is how people are feeling at that particular time when they're taking the survey. Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to devote all your resources to try to move the needle along those particular items. Satisfaction with city maintenance? The highest areas of maintenance were snow removal, large item pickup programs, she was very popular, mowing and trimming of public areas, and maintenance of major city streets. Again, you look at those, it's this extremely high level of satisfaction among residents overall. Satisfaction with communication? This is kind of a tricky one, too, because sometimes it takes a while for these to really sink. And you can have a brand new website, put all that money and effort into it, and it can take a while for that to really resonate because people don't see that every day, that it's just something that you're at occasionally. And I would submit the same thing with street maintenance. A lot of times we'll see street maintenance will be the highest on the list of citizens wanting to address. And you can have a great street maintenance program, but if they don't know about it, they don't see it in their particular street that they drive on all the time, it's not going to register. So keep that in mind as you look at these. Major finding number two, we're going to look at short-term and long-term trends. As mentioned before, we're trying to do a survey every three years. So we're looking at, first of all, what's happened since 2021. You can see some really strong movement in certain categories. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're leading the way in these categories necessarily in satisfaction, because you can see with youth recreational programs later, it's still ranking relatively low, but much better than you were just a few years ago. So it's really showing the effort that your staff are making to try to draw attention to these and publicize things in public. All of these areas, it's very unusual to find increases like this in just three years. You clearly made these a focus point and it's resonated with the residents. It also had some decreases and these are relatively small, again, within the margin of error, and yet we highlight them. Feeling of safety, commercial retail areas down 2% the last three years, and you can read the others. Largest increases since 2018, so we're going back a little bit further. And you can see, again, youth recreational programs, adult recreational programs, you already saw those before, so maybe there are a few percentage more if you go back all the way to 2018. I like this one, the last one, city employees did what they said they would do in a timely manner. We always hear from the anecdotal people saying, oh, they don't listen to you. But clearly, your staff are making a difference and efforts you've made for customer satisfaction and trying to coach and train your staff are making a difference because you can see an 11% increase in the last six years. It's pretty significant. You have some decreases as well. Again, most of these are within your margin of error. How the city's planning new development, redevelopment, visibility of police in neighborhoods, I will say that is always, almost always on the list. And I'm not sure, listening to police chiefs my whole career, what they can really do to change that. It just seems like it's a no win sometimes. Visibility, they want visibility, but if they see them all the time, they're like, why are they here in my neighborhood all the time? You know, so it's kind of a catch 22 a little bit for our law enforcement. But the important thing is, I think, to demonstrate that the department listens and it will engage the citizens and it will be there when they need them to be there in a timely manner. Then we're going to go and find some of the major findings of how you compare to Kansas City Metro in the US. I apologize, it's going to seem redundant because you guys are way above everybody else, almost lacking the feel in some cases, so really a lot to be proud of here. So first of all, we're going to show you, your results are in the dark blue. The KC Metro area survey that we do, the KC Metro area, it's not just a collection of the cities that we have to represent. We do, we do a national survey, we do regional surveys across the country. So this, we have a lot of clients, obviously, in the KC Metro area, so we have that. But you can see every one of these that we're going to show, you're much higher than, than not only the Kansas City Metro, but the US averages. I mean, just across the country, how well you're doing, how well you're managed, how well you're communicating with folks. Again, here, I'm at Labor Point because I know you have a busy agenda tonight, but you can see these, again, well above a lot of these categories, especially compared to the US average. Feeling of safety, again, we get down here to, I thought it was this one, but oh, it is this one. So you see the bottom one in commercial and retail areas in the city. It's the only area where you're actually lagging behind the KC Metro area. And I say lag, it's 4%. So that could change again because of the margin of error, but it might be a talking point. If you want any perfection, you want to address everything so you can, it might be worth, okay, what are we doing with respect to that particular issue of making people feel safe in commercial retail areas? What are other communities doing perhaps that we could, we could mirror and do in our community? We get into code enforcement, that's one of those areas you're going to see that there is, even though you're doing really well, there's still a high level of concern within the community. Satisfaction with city maintenance, and I apologize, a lot of different categories here that we're measuring, from maintenance of city sidewalks, traffic congestion management, et cetera. But again, the important thing, look at those blue lines and how well you're doing and how your citizens really understand what you're doing and like the services that are being provided, something to be proud of for sure. We're looking at leadership. Again, it does start at the top and you look at how effective compared to the other areas in the country, how your citizens feel about you, how they feel about the administration and top staff here, they're working to make positive things happen, so. Trust me, I do have clients in some of these areas that are low on the US and it's not nearly as much fun to make the presentation as it is tonight. So again, satisfaction with communication is another, another program area and doing very well. Now we're going to try to take all of that and even though, put it in a context, because even though you're doing really, really well compared to these others, there are things that rise to the level of being a priority. So this again is a little bit harder to read from where you're sitting, I think, and I apologize for that. I actually brought my reading glasses and probably haven't had to put them on yet. But you see visibility of police in neighborhoods ranked number one. So what's going on here? One of the things we do is we do a important satisfaction rating. Why do we do that? We're measuring not just how happy people are, how satisfied they are, but what's important to them. And so you will see in some of these categories, not on this particular one, but you'll see sometimes the most important rank, there are 11 items, I believe, on this chart. The importance might be 11th, so you're like, or the satisfaction might be 11, but it's not important. So it's kind of one of those situations where, let's say you ask me how satisfied I am with the dog park. Well, we only had one dog park. Last time I took my dog there, he got chased by the bigger dogs and it was a bad experience. So I'm very dissatisfied with the dog park. But if you put it on a list and you say, well, what's important to you is the dog park? They might say, no, I don't care about the dog park. I want these other areas fixed before I let the dog park address. That's just what we do to help, help guide decisions and inform you a little bit differently than we might with other surveys if you have to. So the high priorities there in yellow, medium priorities are all in green. Again, there are desires of your citizens in the four of these areas, but what we've provided is a, is a calculation, a rating that you can analyze there. When looking at parks and recreation, one of these was, so you can see here the satisfaction ranks and you can see occasionally where an item might be very important or unimportant even though they're dissatisfied. So now we look at code enforcement. That I mentioned before, these really resonate as the top priorities that we see coming out of this particular survey this year. The top one is enforcing cleanup of litter and debris. You can see of the items, of the six items that we indicated they have satisfaction was the next to least satisfied, but the highest priority. And then behind that are enforcing the maintenance of residential property, mowing and trimming on residential property, enforcing maintenance of commercial property. And then still important, but not, not as high as the others is the enforcing mowing, trimming of commercial property and enforcing sign regulations. I won't spend much time on here because it's a lot of detail and a lot kind of similar so to your citizenry. There's nothing really here in terms of city maintenance that jumped up to a high level of concern. Means they have fairly, if you look earlier, they have a high satisfaction overall with your public works maintenance services. I always like doing surveys about snow removal feelings in the middle of the summer because people tend to feel a little bit differently in January than they do. And you get some good marks here. Other findings, so we did look at not just how you compare to other areas and just what we talked about, but we looked at some specific questions about, about your community. One of those we wanted to ask was, how do you get information about the city? And you can see here, people can choose more than one, so that's why some of these numbers might be a little bit wonky when you first look at it, but overall, 73% of your citizens said, we get our information about the city from Highlights Magazine and the city's website and mailers, less so through Nextdoor or local newspaper or television shows. We asked, what type of information are you seeking through our communication tools? What are you really interested in learning about? And the highest there was calendar dates and events information. People want to know what's going on and there's party, they want to be part of it. So that's kind of what's going on with that. Information about city departments, programs and services and updating about trending city issues was third on the list. We asked residents how much they agree with certain statements. Marion should move the direction of a future downtown that is considerably different than the present downtown. You had a lot of folks there, 70, 80, over 80% that either strongly agreed or agreed. Marion should continue to support a public art program. You had a high level of that, but you did have 23% or so that were neutral. Didn't really, didn't really think it was that important, but they're not unhappy. Marion should continue to allow open burning of yard waste and leaves. And you had a significant number still in the, in the agree and strongly agree, although there you had over 20% of the residents that disagreed. And we combined the levels of disagreement just to kind of highlight that. We, we know your goal is for satisfaction and we don't want to downplay people that are unhappy, so we combine them in these charts. The Marion should try to be, to bring a grocery store to town even if it requires giving the, sorry, store a multimillion dollar public incentive package. You had about 58% of the people said, yeah, that's a good idea, we really need that. Some other folks weren't really sure or against it, as you can see there. So in summary, again, residents have an extremely high positive perception of the city that's continuing from the last two surveys, setting the standard truly compared to the Kansas City region and nationally. The numbers you have, or you have a lot of folks that we work with, and should really be proud of that. And then the highest investment priorities, I'll read them while we talk about them, but I will open up for any questions you might have.
Okay, that's, oh, go ahead.
I have a question on enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Enforcement on codes and traffic, all those, the dissatisfaction is that they're not being enforced strict enough or the dissatisfaction is that they're being enforced too aggressively?
I get that question a lot and there may be room in the next survey to tweak that a little bit, but our experience is usually it's the former, not the latter.
We just sort of assume that it's the former.
Yeah, what we, what we hear from citizens across the country is those type of questions are, they, they want them enforced. They don't feel like they're being enforced enough. They view, they see debris on its property and grass over 12 inches or whatever your standard is, and they don't like it. And the sad thing is, a lot of times neighborhoods die passively and quietly, they, you know, people would rather move away than turn in their neighbor a lot of times for things or complain or risk somebody getting mad at them and all of that. But, but no, our experience is, that's really a reflection of, we need to, we want more, not less.
Do you have a question?
I apologize, I don't really have a question, I have a statement. I found this very interesting and I feel like we should all be proud of it. The data points that stood out the most to me were the largest increase in satisfaction and it looks to me like that's directly tied to our community center and the programs that Anna and her staff have put together and I think she should be acknowledged for that.
You first. Any other questions?
I don't have a question either, but I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
It is a heck of a lot more fun to hear positive results. I've sat up here long enough. Sean, you remember? We did not have positive results, so we all should be proud and should thank all of the staff that have worked and helped us off to make this happen.
Great, Ms. Shannon.
I just have another data question. How many surveys did we mail out and send out?
I don't have that number in front of me, but it's probably around 3,500, 4,000. It's usually about a 10% return rate.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yes.
Good question. Any other questions? Well, thank you for that continuing. As long as you keep bringing us these positive results, we'll probably keep using you.
Maybe we want to go to next year and it'll stay positive. No, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been an honor to speak with you and to be with the community that really is embraced. You can see the way you're complimenting your staff, the way you're acknowledging the public matters. That's why I think you see the success that you've enjoyed. And obviously, there's still other, young people are never completely satisfied, but we look forward to hopefully working with you in another few years and seeing what things look like then. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks for the job you're done. And thank all of our staff. I mean, this is exactly why we have such great state. All right, it looks like next is considered a bit to EMCOR Services, like we have a private company.
Sure, that's a hard I have to follow, but likely I can do that as well. So we recently completed an investment grade audit and it identified a number of energy conservation measures, including HVAC and building control system upgrades. As noted in the package, there are currently three different building control systems that we have at City Hall, police and the community center. And we're looking to provide one building control system that can be a single face, interface that can be easily monitored by staff. So we hired five-by-five engineers to begin design and they prepared a bid documents that were bid in March of 2024. That included the base bid, which was HVAC upgrades and building control system upgrades for City Hall, Puzzled Works and the historic Plaza Visitors Bureau. And then the bid also included two alternates. Alternate one was updating the existing building control system at the police facility and alternate two was updating the same at the community center. So we received the bids in April and how long was our low bidder? Staff is recommending rejecting that bid because they didn't provide all the requested information and didn't meet some of the specifications in the bid document. So what we're recommending is that we award the bid to the second low bidder, which is EMCOR Services Fagan, who submitted the lowest and most responsive bid in the amount of That included the base bid and both alternates. So their bid for alternate one was upgrading the existing train software system at the police facility to the latest software update of train at police, so used train. And then alternate two would replace existing Siemens building controls at the community center, the train as well. And I wanted to, we talked about this last time, so it's not a complete upgrade of Siemens at the community center. I understand that when that Siemens system was installed, it was an old drill system. And since then, you know, the facilities manager has indicated it's a little hard sometimes to figure out whenever he gets on what's the problem, what's the diagnosis? So we want to use the existing wiring and system and just replace the controller and add the latest upgrade. So we're recommending all the building control systems be upgraded to train system, which also goes with our HVAC because our HVAC equipment will be trained and it will talk to train well as well. So we'll have one system communicating well. So during our inspection of the equipment, we identified several different project enhancements that were recommended to include in the bid. The first one would be while, while EMCOR was up there, they noticed that the discharge ducts on top of the roof, they had the older installation, those are, I think, 20 years old or so. So they recommended, you know, to meet the latest standard to provide new installation. That way we have, you know, we can increase our license. That way we have, you know, we can increase our life cycle. The other item that we didn't have in our bid, but we recommend would be to install that work over a weekend so we're not disrupting employees, that we don't, if it's too hot or too cold, it's going to be pretty uncomfortable to perform those upgrades at that time. So recommending weekend work. And the estimated cost for these items, as well as including a contingency for retrofitting any kind of items that come up during construction, is about sixty thousand dollars that we're recommending to add to the bid that would be paid for out of project contingency, which is also within budget. There was one other project enhancement that we noted, that screening for the rooftop units. When you're retrofitting the units, the unit is more, the rooftop three is more efficient, but it's on this curb adapter that makes it a lot higher. And when we put in the new system to tie into the pipe, it's going to be a little bit higher. So we're recommending hiring an outside sheet metal contractor to go ahead and and increase the screens so you can't see it from the street. And that's also a building code requirement. So that would, the cost for that would be paid for using project contingency, and it's within the city administrator's authority to approve that. So we'd like to go ahead and recommend that we do that as well. We did note that some of the equipment won't come in for about twenty weeks, it's mainly the rooftop units. And so what's the, if the bid is awarded tonight, they would go ahead and get the shop drawings, order their equipment, and then as the equipment comes in, you know, we'd go ahead and get that work done, and then the rooftop units would be completed till December or January. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have a question.
Okay.
It seems like, I mean, twenty weeks out, I mean, it is what it is, but it seems like there may be newer technology in twenty weeks that would even be coming out, but I I know we got to start somewhere, but what do you, do we know what the increased efficiency will be, if you're like, ten percent more efficient or fifteen or the upgrades of these systems or? Do you, I hate your job.
I don't have that number, but the next item is commissioning, which is going to be looking at, you know, operations and efficiencies. It's not just the operation, it's operations, it's efficiency as well, but it's not just energy savings. It's also, like I know in City Hall, sometimes it's it's hard to control the temperature so, and the equipment, and the equipment is older, and so, you know, just making this a better system that's more efficient for everything. But I don't have the exact number.
Yeah, I would try to, I did it to you before, and that's a question, so.
And and it could be that if I look back at the investment grade audit, they may have made an estimate in there, that I could go back and look, and I will do that to see if they have a number in there, that would be an estimate.
Just curious. Did you find a list number? Or Mr. Silver, is there a question?
Was the reason you mentioned weekend work brought up because it will incur time and a half? Because it costs more to do it on a week?
Yes. And they had some, they had the work done at night, but then after more discussion, it was like, well, that could take a little longer, we need a little bit more time in order to do that, so they recommended the weekend. It's about eight thousand dollars for weekend work.
Additional?
Yes.
Great, Ms. Shannon.
Oh, good question. The control systems at community center, upgrading those won't impact any function, sorry, function of the systems or anything like that during all the business hours?
No, it should, and that should be a pretty simple.
I thought so, exactly.
And then, of course, you have your company. I see no other questions, under ten motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Shannon.
I move that the council approve a contract, a contract with EMCOR Services Fagan for construction of HVAC and building control system upgrades, including project contingency not to exceed one million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, Ms. Shannon, you can come in, in charge.
Mr. Mayor, second.
And then, Clerk, motion second.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yowridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like, first company, so again, the next item.
So this item is obviously in tandem with the last item that you just approved. So what we're recommending is that once the equipment is installed, that we hire five-by-five engineers, which is the design engineer, to go ahead and commission, can provide commissioning services in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. So what that scope of work would be, they would review the construction documents and shop drawings, they would do equipment testing, verification of proper operation, any kind of facility training that we need for this type of equipment, and a seasonal trend review and verification, looking at, you know, what's going on here, are there certain issues at certain times of year, and what can we do to make this equipment as operational and as efficient as we can. So we're highly recommending the commission be performed, because this is pretty important equipment, but it isn't required. If you did approve this, it would be within the project budget.
Any questions? For, 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 for this item? Okay, I see no question, under ten motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Shannon.
I move that the council approve a professional services agreement with five-by-five engineers for commissioning services during construction of HVAC and building control systems upgrades in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
And, Ms. Shannon, or second, go ahead, Ms. Shannon.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Clerk, motion second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yowridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. Thank you.
And then, Clerk. Looks like next item up is to order to approve your franchise agreement. I'm sure you're able to put it in.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Next item on the agenda is the renewal of our franchise gas agreement with Kansas Gas Service. The existing Kansas Gas franchise agreement inspired, it's getting ready, inspired this year, we renewed it last time in two thousand nine. City Attorney has worked with several other cities and with Kansas City Gas to, over the last year, to try to find a little bit more uniform agreement, a little bit better, more boilerplate franchise agreements with cities and Kansas Gas. So what you have in the package tonight represents the efforts of the city attorney. This renewal is fifteen years, as the last one was, which is standard. Rants access to Kansas Gas operated in the city at right of way, obviously has clauses in there for them to refer work that needs to be done in the restoration that go through the standard permitting process, and this, and also authorizes the charge, the charging of five percent franchise fee, which is standard, and that is also from the two thousand nine agreement, which will be put on individual bills, usually gets passed on, you will see it on the agreement. And then there's also new from two thousand nine agreement is adjustable value metric rate. So there's gas that flows through our community through pipelines, that the beginning point and the end point are outside of our community. And so previous agreement that was approved in two thousand nine actually created a rate structure for that. How do we actually charge for the usage of that gas? So there's essentially a floating rate that you'll find, it's the last page of the agreement, about essentially a twelve-month floating figure that will be calculated on the amount of gas, of course, the value metric rate is what they call it. Happy to answer any questions about that? This is a first reading, you certainly don't have to approve it tonight, it is up to you if you would like to wait the first reading, but it is not required. I'm happy to answer any questions for the city attorney. You have any answering questions also? Please stand there, Danny.
Any questions, Mr. Ringo? Okay, I assume we're in no time crunch to, we hate to, unless there's a time requirement, we just, let's discuss first reading, this may as a, for a chance.
I was going to propose that we wait the first reading.
Well, we can, if you like, I mean, it's just, I didn't, it did seem like there was a time going.
Well, if no one has any questions, I mean, for efficiency's sake, is like, everyone goes as is?
Yeah, good. I think we're good.
Okay.
We're both waiting it, we have to do the two things. First one would be to wait the first reading. If we have a second on that? Clerk, Mr. Silver?
I'll second that.
And my motion is second, to wait the first reading. And Clerk?
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yowridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Should I read, should I read a question?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Kansas Gas Service.
Okay, Clerk, motion, we have a second, man, for crank.
I'll second that.
I don't clerk, where motion is second.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yowridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldon.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like next item up would be, sir, approve an order establishing common consumption area. Where the hell we at?
I will take care of this.
Why don't you do it from your seat there?
Okay, thank you. And the ordinance before you is to establish a common consumption area for our Marion Grand Station development. The city was approached by the developer to establish this. State statute allows the city to do this by ordinance or resolution, we're choosing to do it by ordinance, and this is the first reading, see, Dean. And once the ordinance is approved by the city, then the applicant, Marion Grand Station, can make an application to the state alcohol beverage control for a common consumption permit. And it's an annual permit, it's a hundred dollars, very minimal fee, they would pay that. Then that permit holder, which would be Marion Grand Station, would grant permission to other licensed drinking establishments to participate in the common consumption area. So the common consumption area, they can take their adult beverage out to that area, so they can leave the bar or the restaurant, take it out to the common consumption area. They have to clearly mark that area with either signage or fencing or or whatever, similar to what we do for Marion Drive Live, we put like no alcohol beyond this point. And then no alcohol can leave that particular area. The participating drinking establishments have to logo their cup, would be their, their trademark or their, you know, their company logo, so that it's clear that all of the beverages being consumed were only purchased at those participating entities. The permit holders liable for any violations that occur, so the city doesn't have any responsibility as far as that goes, and they are expected to, you know, abide by our regulations in chapter five of our municipal code. I do have a representative here from drink development, who has specific questions about their setup. The ordinance does require the map, which was included, you can see that it's kind of a T-shaped area right there, general area of their restaurants. And I can answer any questions if you have any. This is the first reading.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
I had a little difficulty looking at the map and understanding whether it, this area started at a restaurant, because I thought the restaurants were out a little bit further. But then I was also curious if this includes, if they had food truck events or or other events like that, like they decide to bring in, say, a barbecue grill company who also wants to sell alcohol, does it extend to that or just the restaurants?
It's only the area that's marked on the ordinance, which they submit that with their application. Now, an individual drinking establishment can do an extension of premise, which is a temporary permit. In other words, their permit would go beyond the boundaries of their restaurant. So if they wanted to move out and to, you know, more of that common area, they can apply to the state for a temporary permit.
Okay, that's what I thought. So then my question is, how is that regulated? Are barriers set up that go from the front door of the restaurant to the common area? Or?
So let me help you a little bit.
Sure, thank you.
So the common area is the area that's going to be underneath the canopy.
Right.
And then the area that's on the backside, that's going to be the empathy or play area. And so they will obviously have those areas, as as Mr. Silver described, marked off, very much with fencing and other types of denotations, demarcations of where there is, yeah. So it's areas underneath the canopy and then the area that sits behind, like those two buildings.
Okay, I understand that. What I guess what I'm trying to get to, I was not, I was trying not to bring in specific names, but like, when you go to String Hall, all those businesses that sell alcohol, their doors lead out to their common area that allow alcohol. What I'm trying to understand is the restaurants that would be maybe holding an event that sells alcohol that can be taken to that common area, there has, the people have to walk from the restaurant to the common area, they're not adjoined, correct? So how do they get from the restaurant?
You can go right out the restaurant.
You can, okay. Okay, that's what I, I couldn't tell from the map.
Walk out the door, you're right there. You can go out the north door. You go out the north doors or not, but if you go out the other doors, it will be right there.
Thank you, I couldn't tell from the map that they were joined, so thank you.
This permit is for the entirety, or is it limited? I'm sorry, what was that again? Is this for the entire year or is it limited? It's an annual permit, and so they would have to renew it every year.
Does council offer it every year?
No, once the common consumption area is that it's done. That's why we're doing it by ordinance.
I assume, I assume we could revoke it if we wanted to, if they did for some, for some cause, not that they would do that, but we have the ability to do that.
Yes.
Just for clarification's sake.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Silver? This was a first.
Does anyone have any issue with looking at the first reading on this either?
I, I support this, but in the, I support this, but in the spirit of transparency, I don't think this is one that we should rush through.
Yeah.
It's not, if it was a renewal as the franchise fee was, this is a first time for, in fact, it's a reasonably new state law that allows us to do it, doesn't it?
Yes.
So I, I just think we should wait.
Okay.
So I guess, any other questions for Mr. Silver before we move on to the next item? Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's see. Yes. Oh, this is one. Okay, yes.
All right, good evening, council. I'm here to share with you our public art and place making master plan. A link to the full plan was in your packet, as well as a quick summary. The full plan is quite long, so I'm just going to go over some highlights with you. It'll also be posted on the website later this week if you want to read it in all details. So how did we get here? It's one of your goals, to support a public art program through throughout the city. So last year, we reformed the public art committee and hired Julia Dixon to create this master plan. Part of her process was to survey the community, Marion residents and the arts community beyond who are engaged in public art here in Marion. We got a great response from that, three hundred and fifty-four people. She also did twenty-three interviews, either in person or over Zoom with staff and residents and all kinds of people, and held an open house where thirty-five people attended. Her background research also included reviewing about forty different documents and articles and eleven city reports to help shape this master plan. So through all of that research, she identified a few challenges, the first being the perception of public art. There, you've probably heard, a lot of people will say, public art is a waste of taxpayer money. Luckily, the survey results showed that only about seven people explicitly, or seven, sorry, not seven people, seven percent explicitly called that out. However, our community satisfaction survey results that we heard about earlier today demonstrate how there is a pretty high support for public art in Marion. About seventy percent of respondents agreed with supporting a public art program. support for public art in Marion. About seventy percent of respondents agreed with supporting a public art program and we generally have very satisfied residents with all of our services. So um, it seems as if taxpayer money is uh, well supported here. Uh, another challenge uh, is the quality of engagement. There's a handful of our public, current public art pieces that um, have lower engagement or people aren't familiar with, uh, mostly because we don't program specific activities around them. Uh, so that's something that we could uh, improve upon. As well as our community's identity, uh, Marion is, as you all know, is often known as a car town and for posing Ikea uh, rather than our culture and our arts. So those are some challenges and some of the strengths are our people. Um, we have a lot of very welcoming people here who are very friendly and inclusive. Uh, our location is easy to get around the metro. We have a lot of really great arts organizations in the community that we can um, uh, partner with such as the Kansas Arts, Art Institute, the Nelson, lots of other arts councils and other area um, area organizations, arts organizations. So what are the goals of the Public Art and Placemaking Master Plan? To foster place-based pride, rejuvenate and live in public spaces and create a more engaged community through public art. So to achieve these goals, the plan recommends that all future projects be linked to specific placemaking outcomes and defines public art in a more expansive way. So what is public art? It is inclusive of literature, performance, events and experimental works in addition to visual arts. Public art is self-expression in any media that is created for the benefit of the general public. So those outcomes that we want all future projects to help meet go and fall into three different categories with some subcategories, uh, but the, the three categories are creative placemaking, which are outcomes related to geographical locations and their qualities. Uh, community development or outcomes related to people and their needs and economic development, which are outcomes related to um, financial growth and prosperity. Some of the short-term priorities to help us achieve this for implementing this plan um, are to establish a few things by ordinance. That includes a public art impact fee, um, which would also help establish the public art committee and a public art fund to formalize the public art program. Um, and then several locations for considering adding more public art in municipal infrastructure, our parks and facilities, and a few other uh, properties throughout Marion. And then also consider creating or expanding existing grant programs to better support private development uh, or private property owners and having their own public art that further expands the um, city's identity and support of art for culture. Some long-term priorities include um, integrating arts into the earlier stages of major projects. Uh, this would help prevent art as being seen as an adornment or to a new structure or landscape and um, helps recognize that artists and arts facilitators uh, are important participants in the planning processes. Uh, additionally, building partnerships to promote our public art opportunities and improve the stability of our public art. And again, uh, creating uh, some avenues for private property owners to uh, include public art in their public property. Um, some community preferences that were uncovered through the uh, community survey include where we should put the public art. Some of the, the favorite uh, locations included city streets, medians, roundabout, sidewalks, Antioch Park, uh, historic downtown corridor and unexpected places. My favorite answer. Uh, the themes that were most popular include nature and environment, functional and aesthetics. And I will just throw in there that the absolute lowest theme was politics at only two percent. So don't expect any political art in the future. Uh, and there's, these are just two quotes from the surveys that I thought you guys would appreciate. I've always been impressed with the board and inclusive ideas that the leadership and community put into Marion. And I love living in a city that cares about our residents' opinions and art. So find the uh, plan also includes some administrative guidelines. Those guidelines outline the roles and responsibilities for the public art coordinator, um, the public art committee, mayor and city council and city departments. Uh, the plan does recommend that to best implement a public art program, that the public art coordinator should be a full-time position rather than dispersed among various staff. Um, and then for the procurement process, uh, the the plan recommends that uh, city departments get a chance to review a proposal at a very early stage in the process to, you know, bring up any feasibility issues that we might have. Um, as well as before a final project is approved by council and, you know, becomes implemented. So that would be helpful. Um, she also identifies funding options, however, uh, also notes that Kansas is one of the least culturally funded states in the country. And so any grants related to arts funding are extremely competitive. And most grants that are available are related to community engagement or creative placemaking projects, not just art for art's sake. So part of why this plan is called a public art and placemaking master plan. Um, let's see, and as far as implementation goes, uh, she outlines a four-step, the plan outlines a four-step um, process uh, for committee engagement, maintaining an active and robust committee, keeping ourselves organized, engaging the community, um, and raising awareness for all of our public art and continuing to evaluate what we're doing and seeing how we can improve. So finally, at the back of the plan, there are a few resources that include a placemaking strategies rubric that includes tactics and KPIs, a procurement checklist to keep us on track um, that has some action steps and responsibilities, an RFP evaluation rubric for when we get to that point where we get to evaluate proposals, and then listings for different places that we can promote um, solicitations for public art. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, but also give a special thanks to our public art committee, especially uh, Sean McConnell and Christopher Leach who are here to support this. Would you care to say anything?
I'd say something real quick. Uh, mostly just thank you, council. Sean McConnell, uh, chairman of the public art committee. Um, the group that we work with, I don't think they were particularly ready for doing a master plan in terms of a bunch of artists trying to get together to create something like this, but I think it really helped them understand what their community, the rest of their community expects and wants from them. So there's accountability to what we're doing and we understand what they really perceive. Um, I think that's really important for you to understand that. Um, and the group has been um, extremely professional and um, considerate uh, of each other and diligent in this process. So kudos to all of them and you should be very thankful. Take a good look at everything in that report because there's some really cool information in there that we gathered uh, from residents and otherwise. So that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you for chairing that committee for, Mr. McConnell. Yeah, we have, yeah, you, you welcome to speak right now or if there's any questions, but go ahead and speak, Mrs. Jory.
She wants me to. Please, please. She wants me to take up some space.
Please, thank you.
I do have a few little notes and since I follow the rules and sign the sheet.
Can you tell us your name and address from the record?
My name is Christopher Leach and I reside at eight six hundred West Sixtieth Street on the east flank of Mount Lakeview.
Thank you.
I have a few notes and you'll indulge me if you want, otherwise I'm scattering. Uh, this is a plan that understands us Marionites as whole people. Our little city does a lot to meet our real physical needs in so many ways. Roads and parks are excellent community center and so many more efforts are made to make our place great here. We're also people of feeling, of spirit, and art is the human language of our political selves. Our city leadership recognizes that and has given us as residents opportunity to explore this aspect of our public lives together. We all, we're really grateful. The committee was eager and energetic as was our visionary staff producer. We did not all agree all the time, but we helped each other share our ideas and work with our consultant to help forge a path forward to bring more art into public places in Marion. We chose a consultant, Ms. Dixon, from a small independent firm, so independent, she's its own staff person, who could help us and our residents tailor a plan that fits us. It's not a cookie cutter approach that would make us look like every other community around us. As an artist and art historian and a museum consultant, I fully support this plan and I urge you to accept it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Mr. Leach? Go ahead, Mr. McConnell.
Eighty-three twenty-three, sixty-first street, Marion, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Were there any questions for, oh. I'm sorry.
Well, I, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Like, I, I know I kind of just joined the, the art committee of the city council liaison, but you know, I think I would encourage all of you as councillors to reach out to councillor Silver's or I, if you have any questions or concerns about how this was presented or if you have any questions about the plan because I've read it a lot. Um, and I met Julia when she was here interviewing people and um, there she had, I think, unique perspective of working at our community. So I think this was um, being on the committee before, I feel like this gives a lot of structure and a lot of um, just kind of a guidepost for us to, to relate to, um, to keep us moving forward with our public art initiatives.
Thank you, Mr. Shaveta. Thank you, Mr. Silver, for sort of the committee. Are there any questions for Ms. Kujor? Go ahead.
I thought he was going to say.
Go ahead.
No. Um, I, so I am really pleased to hear those of you who actually were at some of the committee discussions because when I read through it, I went, this is different than what we had before because it didn't seem like it to me. I did think that the appendix at the end that had the placemaking chart and those things to consider was probably really useful. A lot of it was so much just gathering history and all of that. I wasn't sure that was really part of the task that I thought she would do. Um, so I'm pleased to hear that you are liking that. I'm hoping that nobody's going to come tomorrow and ask for, next meeting and ask us for a public art coordinator because I thought that was a little beyond what we might be ready for.
Go ahead, Mr. McConnell.
That feeds into my question because I'm a supporter of the public art thing and I want to say this in a very loving way, but I heard the term dedicated staff and full-time coordinator and wondering how that's going to fit into our budget discussions as years go by. At some point as well.
I'll answer that and just simply say that the budget we're presenting tonight for twenty twenty-five does not have a art coordinator in it.
Well, it, it has artwork in the CIP portion, which is, I guess, for the specific pieces of art, not for the administration.
Uh, we, we have a system of the city administrator that currently is uh.
Part of my responsibilities are fulfilling that role right now.
Go ahead, Mr. McConnell.
I may, I guess, to comment on that. I, I agree with you, but I'd also say we don't follow a master plan on everything we do either. So I think it's, you know, again, it's not in the budget for next year, but I think we also have a lot to talk about with the um, I want to call it one percent priority. I know that's not, we're not calling it in here, but you know, an art ordinance. So there's lots of ways that we can, you know, build up to that if that's necessary as we keep moving forward that public art program.
And I agree.
Personally.
My conver- my self-conversation as I was reading the plan was, this is a plan. You've read a lot of plans and they, they have a lot of vision and they're not necessarily something that's going to be implemented tomorrow. So.
Any other questions? I've seen no questions. So I would entertain a motion this time. One of the art committee members would like me to. Go ahead, Mr. Silver's.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council accept the public art and placemaking master plan as recommended by the public art committee.
Mr. Shaveta, would you like to say again?
Yes, I would, thank you, Mayor. One second.
Uh, we have a motion to say.
Councillor Silver's.
Aye.
Councillor Yadridge.
Aye.
Councillor Shaveta.
Aye.
Councillor Hands.
Aye.
Councillor Caldwell.
Aye.
Councillor Leyhey.
Aye.
Councillor Neil.
Aye.
Councillor Ryder.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. It looks like we have to have Oliver come here for the next item, which is probably approval of a need to succeed their revenue rate.
Tonight, um, I'm here just to introduce you to what's in the twenty twenty-five recommended budget as we get through. And this will talk about uh, budgeted funds. We don't have any additional budgeted funds this year. We just have general fund. We have some special revenue funds, bond and interest and capital projects. Some of the highlights here, we have a three percent salary increase and a two percent reserve for merit adjustments. A new position, however, this has nothing to do with arts, uh, to potentially coordinate the single hauler program. And just a couple of slides, we have a slide dedicated to that and Mr. Engle will talk about that. And uh, it assumes a twelve percent health insurance increase. We certainly hope it won't be that much, but we won't know until November. All current services are funding. In addition, some highlights of additional things, there's fifty thousand in there for the city's seventy-fifth anniversary celebration. There's public works, police and fire equipment that we'll talk about. And then all of the current grants are also in there and funded. General fund expenditures, uh, specifically, uh, there is proposed twenty-one point six million in general fund operating expenditures, five point six million in transfers to other funds. So it's largely fun, the capital improvement projects and the equipment reserve fund total twenty-seven point two million in expenditures. That's a four point nine percent over the current year. When you look at what is the general fund go-to, you can see that police and court make up five point six percent, which is not five, five point six million, which is twenty-one percent of the budget. Capital improvement fund and equipment is twenty percent, public works eighteen percent, fire is eleven percent. So your public safety is a healthy percentage of, of what all that covers. I'll let Mr. Engle talk about the office coordinator position.
Sure, I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief and happy to answer your questions about it. So uh, we have been um, having conversations about the single hauler. Uh, as we saw earlier, there is a high percentage of folks in our community uh, that are supportive of exploring the single hauler. It is a council goal to explore a single hauler. Uh, we had a work session and I shared with council in the past that we don't have currently uh, capacity to pick up what we project to be the staff need to do single hauler. However, that is not a full FTE. We're not exactly sure how much it is. It's going to be somewhere around a third, perhaps to a half if we do it. Uh, what we are proposing is that uh, we have some additional capacity that we could use in HR. So for those of you that may not be aware, Kason, who sits at the front counter, she is actually a half FTE that's devoted to HR. So she does half office coordinator and half HR. Uh, there is some additional HR capacity that I've kind of been holding off. As you know, I don't like to increase the FTE count. I take pride in the fact that I haven't, other than our community center, added any FTEs since I've been here. Uh, so I take it pretty seriously. Uh, so I take it pretty seriously. Uh, so we've kind of held off that additional half, uh, HR FTE. A lot of letters there. Uh, but, uh, with the need for some additional capacity, if we were to do single hauler, we felt like this would be a good way that we could move Kason, fully embed her in HR as a full FTE for H, for HR, have the office coordinator position, which is half of her current FTE, add half for the single hauler, and a few additional things that we would add on there, uh, and we would just have a new position. Uh, we, we try not to, what I call Frankenstein positions, to where it makes them difficult to hire them at a later date. Uh, we think that this would flow together as an office coordinator, maybe even a little bit more than the current HR slash office coordinator position. Uh, so this would be a position that we would not hire, if we would not make this move until we knew what we were doing with single hauler. So we would start the process, we would say, okay, we feel like it's heading this direction, we feel like the council is supportive, we feel like the residents are supportive, let's ramp up and let's get, let's get somebody on board that can help us with this, uh, the implementation of this process. So we have stuck it in the, uh, budget, uh, based on the assumption that we're going to do single hauler. If we don't, um, we won't. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions, Ms. Engle?
And that is, I believe, that's the only FTE that we're adding. If, if needed.
I see.
So with that, these numbers include the addition of that, um, full-time equivalent, and so you would have an eight point five percent increase in salaries and, uh, overall salary benefits increasing by eight point six percent, that those assumptions admit. Community grants, there was only one, uh, change, and this was to change the down, um, historic grant into a historic exterior grant and to increase the funding, and then let Mr. Engle talk about it.
Sure, this is another, uh, you know, I love my grants. I think the council loves the grants. I think our residents and our businesses love the grants. We, uh, we allocated a million dollars several years ago to our hotels, uh, where they could max out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each to rehab their, uh, uh, to rehab their facilities, but there's only four hotels in our community. We are fairly certain that there are probably going to be at least one that doesn't use any of it, and so I would like to redirect some of that to another possible use in the commercial areas of our community. Uh, and what, what I have in mind for this particular one would be, um, to use the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's left over from the hotel grant, uh, this would be probably, uh, older buildings. We would be looking at buildings that would be on the register, and how would they, uh, should they make a choice to invest to rehab those properties? For example, downtown, the Pittman Building, which is a hundred and fifty-year-old schoolhouse, it's currently a used car building. If they wanted to give, if they wanted to have a different presence in a, say, future downtown and wanted to rehab that building, that would be an opportunity that, for the city, to help them rehab that building. Shawnee has similar grants that help fund some of the rehabs in their downtown along Neiman and Johnson Drive. So if the Pittman Building were to follow some, uh, of these, um, requirements that we put together, we would have funding to provide them with. That would be what it would be used for. Um, we wouldn't use it for anything else, but we, staff would like to keep that money in some sort of a grant form for our commercial businesses. We probably, if that doesn't work, we will probably continually widen it up and make it broader, so we can have more commercial businesses included, but we just don't want to have, staff does not believe that we should just have a wide open, hey, if you need some money for a new siding, we're going to give you a new siding. Uh, so that's, it would be citywide, it would not necessarily be downtown. Originally, we had it just downtown, so it would be historic buildings that exist anywhere in our community. We, we were imagining probably a hundred-year-old buildings or more, and then we'll just broaden it from there. Have, it, we still have to put, like we do with most grants, we get approval from council, we come back with a little bit more tightened-down requirements, still going to work on some of those, but that's, uh, that's the gist of what this grant would go for. Again, it's, it's money that's already been allocated for the grant, so it's not really new funding also.
The proposed city-funded grants, again, uh, there has been no change to these. You have the same grants, and, um, they would total eight hundred and ten thousand. That includes the, the increase to the exterior, uh, historic grant. Are there any questions? This is kind of the high view of the general funds. And again, in your packet, hopefully you saw, was the draft budget that really provides you more details. If we go to our other funds, we have our bond and interest fund. One highlight of this one is proposed in twenty-five, we do not have a property tax levy at all in there. We believe that, uh, sales tax will be able to take care of the debt service on it, so, um, that is where a portion of the property tax reduction that's proposed in here would, would come from. Transit guest tax fund, uh, total expenditures of six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Equipment reserve fund, uh, capital expenditures of one point six million. Those include primarily, uh, a couple of dump trucks with dump beds at five hundred and forty thousand, and, uh, body worn and in-camp car cameras for the police department. And we have, uh, some IT replacements and replacing the city door lock system, so for a total of one point six million. Capital improvement fund, this would fund what we talked about in May with the CIP fund, with the CIP projects, and total expenditures of eight point one million dollars. And then, uh, the I thirty-five district tip fund, this year we had a, uh, two payments to Drake Development, and so expenditures are seven point eight million. Next year, we'll only have the one, it kind of goes back to a more normalized amount of four point three million. So if we look at all the funds overall, we have total expenditures of thirty-nine point four million, transfers to other funds of six million, so total transfers and expenditures of forty-five point five million in the budget for next year. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions for your home?
And again, as you go home and you look at your books over, you know, over, or the, what's included with your packet, you have questions, you can always bring them back in, and we can talk about those questions. Property tax revenues. One of our goals is maintaining adequate reserves and funding city services to reduce the city's mill levy whenever possible. This budget includes a one-mill reduction from the twenty-twenty-three budget. And as you may recall, originally, it was proposed that in the twenty-twenty-four budget, we would see a quarter of a mill reduction due to, uh, some errors that got reduced down to just under twenty-three mills. We're proposing, uh, twenty-six point six five, which is one mill. I showed you this last time, but I do think it shows, I mean, we were so consistent and kept that there for so long, and we had been hit down, but we're going to be below that even, even now, which is great. This is our final assessed valuation for the budget. Um, fifty-one percent is in commercial, residential is forty, except forty-six percent of that. And then looking at the revenue neutral rate, that's the rate that you would need to generate the very same amount of property tax this year as last year. I know we've talked about this, you know, quite a few times. It doesn't allow anything for inflation or new construction. If we looked at last year, because we had a reduced mill levy, we generated six point one million. The county, when they, uh, calculated our revenue neutral rate, they tried to keep to that same amount. And so we would actually need to, if we went with the revenue neutral rate, we would need to address, to reduce the mill levy another one and three-quarter mill, um, in order to stay below the revenue neutral rate. Uh, however, we're proposing that we go with the twenty-six point six six five. If we do, that generates seven point seven million, it gets us back up where we were before. And, uh, the difference, however, in revenue collected is one point six million. If we look at other Johnson counties, right now, the indication is that all of these cities are intending to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So if there's any questions about that, we can talk.
Questions for government?
We can kind of talk next steps. Uh, tonight, we have on the agenda, um, the approval of exceeding the revenue neutral rate before July twentieth. Staff has to notify the county of whether or not we intend to. This does not set the mill levy rate, nor does it lock you in to having to exceed the revenue neutral rate. It's just unless we notify them that we may exceed it, we can't. And so this is really a, yeah, we think we're probably going to propose a budget above that twenty-one point, uh, whatever it was, the almost two-mill reduction. So assuming that you do pass that and say, yes, we're going to, then, um, in August twenty-sixth, we'll have a public hearing to consider what, to consider whether or not we're going to exceed it and also to adopt the budget. Between now and August twenty-sixth, everything can kind of roll around or roll along in two different ways. If there are no further questions, we don't have to talk about the budget again before then. However, we are very open to, if there's questions, concerns, or other discussion that needs to be had after this point, to coming back and, and discussing whatever those things may be at the second meeting in July. But at least for tonight, we, we need to have the decision on, is it okay for us to tell the county we're going to probably exceed the revenue neutral rate?
So just for clarification, that, that, that means we're going to exceed twenty-one point three-three-two. Whether that's twenty-one point six or that's the current twenty-two, it, it just means that we are going to exceed twenty-one point one-six-eight.
Right. And so with that, there's a motion on your intended to...
I would entertain a motion, uh, that we exceed that myself.
I, I would too.
Present, as I can make a motion.
I'd be happy to do that, yes. I move that the council authorize staff to notify Johnson County of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and to hold a public hearing on August twenty-sixth on the matter.
Can we have a motion of a second, Ms. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, uh, we have a motion of a second.
Councilmember Yowridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
I have one more question about the capital improvement and the generators that we put on hold this year because of the, it's a financing of the budget. Um, do those show up in the capital improvement plan for twenty-twenty-five, or, or a question or not further?
No, right now, they are, we did not reduce the budget. We just said we were going to hold off, and then like in the July-August timeframe, we would come back to council and decide whether or not we were going to progress with those. And so if in fact, whenever we come back in, in July, if you were to say, no, we want you to hold off for another year, we would need to push them out.
Yeah, I could, I could give a further update on that, see if they probably could also. Uh, current planning, I think he's the chair, Bill, for, current planning commission chair. He actually is a facilities, uh, recently retired facilities superintendent for the University of Kansas system. He knows HVAC, so we've actually started to have some conversations, and we've actually engaged him. So Caleb Hunt, our facility superintendent, has, has met with him to, because he is, he's an expert on it, knows more about it than we do, uh, and they've had some good conversations, uh, about that. So I think we're going to probably be coming back to council, I would imagine, sometime soon to go out to bid. But, yeah, we, we've started to have those conversations about what's the best equipment out there, and how should we size it? And how many hours should it run? And a lot of things that are both my understanding of generators, but that's why we brought in Bill, because he's an expert in it. And he's been gracious enough to, to work with our staff, so that's an update.
Uh, thanks, considering we had to close the community center for a few days.
Absolutely. Okay. Maybe develop an update, looks like it's next, pretty fair.
Your mayor, councilman, prime director, municipal director. Uh, seeing an update on a few items. First of all, uh, unfortunately, all the spring storms we had about the hell have, uh, turned into a high rate of building permits, for some working site, and they actually break, uh, records on number of permits that we issued this month. So if you're in the city hall and you see Nancy or Jasmine, you can use, extend your condolences. They've been extremely busy, it has been very, very busy back there. So if you see, when you see a report on building permits, it was the high, high number of just permits issued, uh, it's because of working permits because of the storms. Um, also on the building side of things, obviously, two big projects, Marion Grand Station and, uh, Oyster Crap Motors. If you have been by Oyster Crap Motors, then take a look there, we've made a lot of progress in those. So both those projects are going well, uh, any problems, and we continue to move along with those. And then on the grant side of things, um, can you get residential exterior grant applications in? Um, getting closer and closer to starting to get to a point where we might have to consider, um, not, uh, allocating fund for some projects, but if folks have projects for that, please do get those in. And the resident, excuse me, and the sustainability grant program still has ample funds available, so if anybody would like to upgrade their HBAC system to beat the summer heat, we can certainly help with that. And then the other thing, um, our driveway grant program, you all, uh, last month approved a contract to extend to the contractor. We have done that, we've engaged the contractor, and they intend to be starting work, uh, first of July. So we'll be out there, they will easily be out there working with the contractor and, you know, probably going to get that done. So with that, happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions for your mayor? I see no questions. Thank you, sir. Okay, with the public committee minutes, we're in our packet, so I'll answer any questions for that. You could actually see on our council, you could press a kiss like that. But, um, Ms. Regal, do we have anything else?
Yeah, just two quick updates. One, just, uh, echo comments made earlier. Congratulate the council and thank staff for the fantastic results we have, uh, in, in our satisfaction survey. Uh, these are fantastic, these are, uh, this is what I use, and as a result, all of your staff uses as really our north star. This is really what tells us, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? This is what guides our work, this is what validates the work that we do. We only do it every three years, we don't ask people questions every time we go through tough, tough conversations. This is really the best way to do it, and it really echoes, uh, that, that we're doing the right thing. So again, congratulations to you, and thanks to our staff and our residents for filling it out and their, their support in all that we do. Uh, you're going to see a lot more about this, you're going to see videos, we're going to, we're going to celebrate the heck out of this, and we're going to let our residents know, uh, we don't toot our own horns a whole heck of a lot, but I think we've got some celebrations to, and some successes to share, uh, with and amongst our staff, our elected officials, and our residents. So I look forward to that. Uh, and then the last thing is, I'm going to, I think missed my second council meeting in thirteen years. Next time, I'm going to be in Alaska from, uh, July fifth until July nineteenth, so I'll be gone for two weeks. Uh, I will, I might be available by email, maybe, I don't know, probably not, but I will not be at the next meeting. Caitlin will be, uh, holding for it down for me. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have in the interim between now and then. I'll take a picture. I won't bring, I won't bring in various varieties back like Councilman Mayor did, but, yeah, do you want to?
You can't ship them, you know.
I didn't show all my pictures.
How about some moose jerky? So what about the retirement of the, we got invited to go to the retirement at the World War One Memorial of the Corps of Engineers Commander?
So that's, that's a change in command ceremony tied with the retirement. So Colonel Rayfield is the current United States Army Corps of Engineers Colonel. So he is the head Fred, as Mr. Dyer likes to say, of, of the Corps. We don't work with him a whole lot. We work with his staff, but he is retiring and as a result, there will be a change in command that we were invited to at the World War One Memorial. We're more than welcome to attend or.
My, my question really is, is, is it something that we, we should have a presence at?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt, but again, we don't really work with them. I think it was more courtesy we were invited, is my personal opinion. But I think, you know, we, it would hurt to have someone there. It may add to this mayor report in the meeting afterwards.
I can just go, Jake can just stay.
Oh, there you go. Take the council member to work. Yeah, we, we can certainly, we can certainly have a conversation about it, seeing if we can't get at least a staff person there or coordinating with the council member.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Engle? Okay, well, if there is nothing else before, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
A motion for a second, I might want to leave, I think.
On paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.